The City Commission meeting to order. Here to provide the invocation is the, I'm sorry, it is 3:00 on Wednesday, June 8th, at the regularly scheduled meeting. Here to provide the invocation, will you please stand and join me? Reverend Kelly Burke, the chaplain of Tallahassee Police Department.
Chaplain, thank you so much for calling. Let's pray. Gracious God and heavenly Father, would we just thank you for your presence? We admit that we need you. Our hearts are breaking. We are saddened, not without hope. Father, I just prayed you would build a city with your presence, with your spirit, with your peace. Father, I just pray for this officer's family. Pray for his TPD family. Pray for all those that protect and serve our communities throughout this land, but especially in this, our great city of Tallahassee. Lord, as our leaders meet today to discuss budget, Lord, again, work goes on, life goes on, things go on. The Lord just help us deal with that perspective, dealing with the realities of this early this morning and preparing for all our tomorrow. Just pray that you give wisdom, give guidance. What I pray is that you can give miracle working power, Lord, to do what needs to be done so this city can move forward collectively together. In honor and joy to your name, and to be a blessing to one another. Father, be with each and every one of you. We all have a place. We all have a role in which we can put our hands to the wheel and help. Father, just give us wisdom, give us the courage that we need, give us the capacity to support one another, to love one another, to encourage one another. Lord, again, I just pray your special blessing be upon us.
Ladies and gentlemen, the American flag is to my left or right. You will please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, no one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Reverend, thank you so much for joining us and providing the invocation. Ladies and gentlemen, before we start the meeting today, I know that everyone is aware that this has been one of the toughest days in the city of Tallahassee, most recent history. Earlier this morning, we lost a member of the Tallahassee Police Department in the line of duty. He died a hero. And while it's not my place to go into details for an ongoing investigation, I would like to ask Chief Revel, please come join us at the podium, provide an update of what's appropriate. And Chief, I'm going to ask you, when you are done with your comments, if you will please lead us in a moment of silence, the officer, his family, for TPD, and for all of the city of Tallahassee. Now, before you speak, Chief, there will be plenty of time of congratulations and to celebrate later, but I do want to acknowledge your completion of the FBI Academy, which you would have graduated tomorrow. And you're back with us today, and we appreciate it. Congratulations, and we will celebrate that in a big day. But if you wouldn't mind, Chief, providing an update.
Thank you all.
I don't know if the microphone is on, Chief.
When I got the call this morning, you know, it's the call you never want to get, and immediately began making my way back from the academy. So I had a lot of time to watch the incredible people that I knew were here and I knew were taking care of things and doing a great job. So I want to thank my staff. You guys are phenomenal. The word I kept hearing, you know, was devastated. And we're devastated. We're devastated as a department, we're devastated as a community, and I thank you for the support that this community continually pulls out and shows this department. It's in times like these where we truly, truly come together, and I truly call on our community, support us more than you ever have, because these officers go out each and every single day knowing that this reality could be their reality. So I hope and I pray, and I know that you will, join us as we continue to work through this investigation, as we continue to support the family. We will stay in continual contact with them and make sure that they have everything that they need, and we'll continue to support the TPD family. I want to make sure, I think, our fire department brothers and sisters and paramedics that were there. This is dramatic for them as well, to be on that type of scene. So, again, we talk all the time about community and about how we work so hard to come together as community, all of us, TPD, the community, the city, all of us. And it's in times like these where that truly shines through. So thank you for your love and your support and your continued prayers. So if you would now, I'm going to ask you to stand.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, we do have two proclamations for today, but before we do the proclamations, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The materials have been provided in item 910 of your agenda material, and the materials have been updated in item 12.05. And item 5.03, which was to be a presentation, has been rescheduled, hopefully for the next meeting to ensure that the family can attend.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions on the agenda modifications? Okay, moving forward, we have two presentations today. I'd like to ask my colleagues to come join me if you would like. I will be presenting the first proclamation. Commissioner Dianne Williams-Cox will be presenting the second proclamation. Ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to say, and we do have a little celebrating to do today, that I am one of only a handful of mayors across the state of Florida that has an LGBTQ+ Advisory Council. I would like to ask the members of my advisory council to please come forward. The month of June is Pride Month, and I have a proclamation to present. Come on in. Lieutenant, I'm going to let you do the honors to accept as well if you'll come join me over here. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas a central tenet of United States law is the principle of nondiscrimination and equal protection under the law as human rights, and whereas members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning LGBTQ communities still face ongoing discrimination based on their innate status, resulting in untalented human tragedy, loss of life, community isolation, and abuse. And whereas the city of Tallahassee opposes any type of oppression, be it based on race, gender, gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation, is committed to justice and equality for all individuals. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has long strived for equal rights for all citizens and maintains a strong stand that each individual deserves to be treated equally and with respect, no matter what their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, race, size, documentation status, color, creed, ethnic origin, or religion may be. And whereas to celebrate the richness and diversity of the Tallahassee community, the office of Mayor Johnny Daly's LGBTQ+ Advisory Council, and let me stop right there and say, I am so proud of these individuals that have served with dignity over the years. We have worked through some very tough issues, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your service. We might not always agree on every single issue, but I love you and I appreciate what you do, and you're serving on the council for me and advising me on all issues. And various community organizations, businesses, and individuals will conduct various cultural, educational, and entertainment activities during the month of June 2022 to focus attention on the importance of equality, equity, acceptance, and respect for diversity among us. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of June as Pride Month, to honor freedom from prejudice and bias in any form, to recognize and praise those members of our community who constantly fight the battle for equal treatment for all, and to further restate the city of Tallahassee's commitment to remain adamantly opposed to all forms of discrimination and oppression. Write into the record in front of each and every one of you here today. Signed by me, John Daly, dated June 8th, 2022. As appropriate. Present. Would you like to form a chair?
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Brandon Moten. I currently serve as the vice chair of the mayor's LGBTQ+ advisory. And so, as noted, June is Pride Month, and that's a time for us to come together, especially in LGBTQ+ community, to celebrate the freedom to be ourselves. And a part of being ourselves, one of our initiatives that we have launched on this advisory council is the development of an LGBTQ+ community survey. And so the mayor has shared this survey on his social media, and we are asking for individuals who reside in the city of Tallahassee who are allies or who are a part of the LGBTQ+ community to complete this survey so that way we can have a better understanding of the needs of our community members. So thank you all, and we look forward to our ongoing work on the advisory council.
Thank you. If we could ask the members of the Charmettes to please join us down front, dressed in that beautiful red. You look gorgeous. Oh, so that's what it was. That's what it was, okay. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the Leon County Chapter of the Charmettes Incorporated is celebrating 50 years of its annual signature event, the Leon County Charmettes Deputéant Presentation and Ball, at which more than 500 Leon County young African-American women have been formally introduced to the greater Tallahassee community. And whereas the Leon County Charmettes Incorporated members have contributed to society and the community through their socially conscious programs by providing workshops, seminars, and community events to address etiquette and social graces, professional development, health and wellness awareness, recognition of cancer advocates, financial literacy, and social media decorum. And whereas the Charmettes have awarded more than $700,000 in academic scholarships. You may applaud. 700,000, more than $700,000 in academic scholarships to deputé participants and our major contributors toward the research and eradication of cancer. And whereas the Charmettes promotes giving back to our community by engaging the deputés in volunteer activities like Relay for Life, Riley House Rockathon, Hospice Tree of Remembrance, and other community service programs and projects. And whereas the deputés apply their experiences and the lessons learned during this life-changing journey, have excelled in an array of careers and entrepreneurial pursuits, and have become trailblazers as local and national leaders on political and humanitarian platforms. And whereas the city of Tallahassee recognizes that the collective legacy and high ideas of the Charmettes are noteworthy and have made an indelible impact upon the lives of the young ladies who live, whose lives have been positively impacted in our community. Now therefore, I, Johnny Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, hereby recognize the Leon County Chapter of the Charmettes Incorporated and witness thereof, and he signed it here. So thank you, ladies, for all that you do. I know many of you, and I know some many of the children that you have impacted. So keep doing what you're doing. Dr. Melinda James will be accepting on behalf of...
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and fellow city commissioners. On behalf of the Charmettes of Leon County, I am Dr. Melinda Jackson-James, and it is our sincere honor and privilege to stand before you today. We're standing on the shoulders of those giants who came before us, and we're just following up with what they have done and what they have committed to this community. And we are so proud that we have been a part of this. And again, we thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, may we join you in the picture?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, as we prepare for our photograph, I did want to announce that my oldest daughter, who is now a midshipman in the United States Navy, was Miss Deputéant 2018. And it was these ladies that helped prepare her for that milestone in her life, and I thank them as well. Thank you.
Courtney, too. Courtney Thomas.
Here we go.
Renee, give him a hug.
Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements this evening?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will take citizen input on the agenda items as they move forward, as I like to start every meeting, and specifically today with the events that we've had take place in the city. I'm going to ask everybody to please join me. Let's help set the tone, have a civil conversation on the issues before us. These are important issues. Let's set the record for the world and everyone that's watching on how it's supposed to be done right, right here in Tallahassee. Moving on, we are on, do we have any other appointed boards or committees or governments to appear before us today?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sutton will introduce this item.
Excellent. Mr. Sutton, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, too. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and other appointed officials. Agenda item 8.01 is a presentation by the Chair of the Audit Committee of the city's annual financial report and audited statements. And at that point, I'd like to turn over the lectern to Ms. Sunny Phillips for the presentation.
Excellent. Phillips, it's great to see you. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. I do recognize many of you. It's good to be here. So today, I am formally presenting the comprehensive annual audit to you for acceptance. There were two highlights that I wanted to remark on. You received a clean, unmodified, flying-as-high-as-a-circus audit from external auditors. So congratulations.
Good job, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it is a good job. But when you have an audit, they're always going to find something. Except my father was in the banking business, and he hated auditors. But anyway. So, but they were minor. One was your 20-plus-year-old reporting system really needs to be replaced, but you're going to replace it in the fall anyway, so that's no big deal. And there was one journal entry that was incorrect. So you really did a great job, and especially since there were so much CARES funding, you had nothing wrong with your grant compliance, which to me is huge. I was with Community Affairs, and we audited your grants, some of your grants, and I'm a grant recipient, a grant writer, so that's really important, and you did a fantastic job. So I hope you will accept the report, and if you have any questions, I think Dennis has already talked to you. But if you have any questions, ask him, don't ask me. Thank you.
Phillips, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Mr. Sutton, any final comments?
I'd just really like to take the opportunity to recognize Patrick Twymann and his staff, and Roberta McManus and her staff on the job well done on these financial statements this year.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And with that, I'd ask for your approval and acceptance of the annual financial statements.
Well, I would just like to stay for the record. To be the seventh-largest city in the state of Florida with over a billion-dollar budget, with thousands of employees as a workforce, and to have a stellar audit report that comes out, speaks very well, Mr. Manager of you, and Attorney, Mr. Cook, Mr. Sutton, for the leadership that we have at the city, and I certainly do appreciate it. Now, Mr. Cook, you wanted to weigh in?
I just appreciate the opportunity to weigh in real quickly. I have the pleasure of being at the meetings where the Audit Committee receives the report from the external auditors, and because I've done that for some time, I wanted to add, not only is this an excellent report, it's the best I can remember in a number of years. So Patrick and Roberta really do a great credit, and we always, the manager talks about being the national leader in service, and we see constant improvement even in these things here where we're reporting the service we provide. So I wanted to be sure that got mentioned, that even compared to other years, this is an outstanding result.
Could not agree more. The report has been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Appreciate it. Okay, we are now on the consent agenda. Do we have any items pulled off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
No items have been pulled off?
Move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Before we move to the motion, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor, no comment.
Okay, let's move with the motion by the mayor, excuse me, Dianne Williams-Cox, Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. Checking in with our technical folks, is my sound coming through okay? Are we doing all right?
Louder in the room.
Okay. I'll try to, that's much better. Okay, I apologize for that. If you missed it, we had the best audit we've ever had in 20 years. We just passed the consent agenda. Things seem to be going okay right now. Point 11. Okay, we're on item number 11.01. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1101 is a recommendation for the reappointment of Gus Corbella to a term on the Downtown Improvement Authority. He had served a partial term, so this will be his first full term.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Mr. Matlow, I'm going to come to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if that's on stuff.
You're on.
Okay. Yeah, first, I just want to thank Mr. Corbella for his service. It's been some long meetings lately as the DIA works through its strategic plan, so we appreciate all the work, all of the volunteers have been putting in, and I'll move acceptance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow for the reappointment of Gus Corbella, seconded by the mayor pro tem. And you know what? On a personal note, I know he has opened up a retail shop in Tallahassee. He believes in downtown Tallahassee, and that's good representation. Excellent. All right, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. Item 11.02, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, this is an appointment to the, a recommendation for appointment to the Audit Committee. There's a seat that is currently vacant. Staff is recommending David Reed to fill this seat, which would complete the remainder of this term, which expires in June of '24.
Yes, sir. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, colleagues.
Move acceptance of the recommendation.
Commissioner Williams-Cox probably moves a recommendation. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 11.03, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, this item is to fill a vacant city commission spot on the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group. Zachariah White is the recommended applicant for commission approval. No speakers.
Okay, no public speakers on this item, colleagues?
Move acceptance.
Second.
Commissioner Williams-Cox has probably moved acceptance of the motion and seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on the introduction of ordinance, 12.01, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01, introduction of ordinance number 22-0-07, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, creating the property rights element, providing for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-07 and set the first and only public hearing for June 14, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners in the Leon County Commission Chambers in the Leon County Courthouse.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
Okay, the action is simply to accept the reading of the ordinance, first introduction. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
All right, properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 12.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.02 is introduction of ordinance number 22-0-09, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, amending the urban services area and the land use element, providing for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-09 and set the first and only public hearing for June 14, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners in the Leon County Commission Chambers in the Leon County Courthouse.
Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation on option number 1.
Two, second.
Been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't intend to rehash this conversation here. I understand the action we're taking is just to introduce the ordinance. That being said, I feel it's important that the records show we clearly have a shortage of housing, a shortage of affordable housing, but I do not believe at all that expanding our urban services area without aggressively pursuing other options is the way to go. But I look forward to having that conversation in full at the public hearing, but I did want to make sure that the record showed that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Porter in dissent. Item number 12.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.03 is introduction of ordinance number 22-0-10, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a large-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the planned unit development land use category to the suburban land use category at Woodville Highway and Capital Circle Southeast, providing for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-10 and set the first and only public hearing for June 14, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners in the Leon County Commission Chambers in the Leon County Courthouse.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, the recommended action is introduction. Is there a motion?
Move staff recommendation of option number 1.
Properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Porter in dissent. Item number 12.04, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.04 is introduction of ordinance number 22-0-11, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the government operational land use category to the activity center land use category at McClay Commerce Drive and Financial Plaza, providing for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-11 and set the first and only public hearing for June 14, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners in the Leon County Commission Chambers in the Leon County Courthouse.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues, recommended item is introduction.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Okay, the motion on the table has been made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seeing any further comment? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. Passes unanimously five zero. Item number 12.05, Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.05 is introduction of ordinance number 22-Z-12, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as high-intensity urban activity center on the official zoning map from planned use development at McClay Commerce Drive and Financial Plaza, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 22-Z-12, and set the first and only public hearing for June 14, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners in the Leon County Commission Chambers in the Leon County Courthouse. Any expiry disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on 12.05?
No, sir.
Recommended action is introduction.
So move.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Item number 12.06, Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.06 is introduction of ordinance number 22-Z-18, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee amending the university village planned unit development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, located on approximately 19.1 acres at the northwest corner of the intersection of West Pensacola Street and Ocala Road on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 22-Z-18, and set the first and only public hearing for July 13, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any expiry disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, the recommended action is the introduction.
So move.
Second.
Okay, properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Item 12.07, Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.07 is the introduction of ordinance number 22-0-08, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, amending the mobility element, providing for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 22-0-08, and set the first and only public hearing for June 14, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners in the Leon County Commission Chambers in the Leon County Courthouse.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Recommended action is introduction.
Move staff recommendation for option number one.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Madam Attorney, do we have any other items come before us in regards to the introduction of ordinances?
There are no more introduction of ordinances.
Mr. Manager, would you like to play with us now? You've been kind of quiet the whole time. We've been through the Inspector General and Attorney Clerk, and now the Attorney.
I think we need to give Cassandra a stipend for that work on the introduction of ordinances.
Your own policy formation and direction. Item number 13.01, the update on nomination of Jake Gaither Golf Course, National Register of Historic Places. This is an information item only, but I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask Jan Auger to come forward. I'm gonna be, Jan, if you, Jan is used to me doing the summary for her, but we're not gonna do it that way today.
I always have to be ready. Actually, I'm gonna ask my two staff members to come up here and introduce themselves.
All right.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tion DeWitt, Supervisor at Jake Gaither Golf Course.
My name is Matthew Wells, Supervisor at Almond Golf Course.
So on April 6, you approved the nomination of Jake Gaither Golf Course to be considered for the National Historic Registry, and on May 19, the Florida, I want to make sure I say this right, Florida National Registry Review Board approved it. So we are formally, we're in Washington DC right now, and the Keeper of the National Registry, they're gonna vote on it. They'll have 45 days to vote on it. So we should know, hopefully, I plan to be back here July 13 for the next commission meeting to give you an update on that. But I just want to tell this one story that I shared with the review board on May 19. Johnny Lee Brown was one of the caddies who used to caddy at what is now Capital City Country Club. And in my mind, Johnny Lee Brown was one of the best golfers to come out of Tallahassee. And I wonder how good he could have been had he had had excess. He holds the course record at Jake Gaither Golf Course. He shot a 59, and I don't think that'll ever be broken. Anyone who plays golf might understand that, but, so to put it into numbers, if we did 600,000 rounds at Jake Gaither Golf Course, there's only 159. That's pretty amazing. And Johnny was known for playing fast. He wanted to play fast, everyone couldn't keep up with him because he wanted to play so fast. And he said he used to play so fast because when he was at Capital City, he's sneaking on or whatever, he had to hurry up and play as many holes he could before they kicked him off. So, and then one other thing about that, Chris Hannah, who's a local young man, grew up, he started playing golf at Jake Gaither, and Johnny Lee and the guys, the caddies like Johnny Lee were his mentors. And Chris Hannah is the first person of color to be, have a scholarship at, to be offered a scholarship at Florida State University. So that's, when you tie it all together, it's amazing how it all lines up and how important Jake Gaither Golf Course is. So I will see you July 13.
Jan, gentlemen, keep up the great work. Do we have any public comment on this, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we do have one speaker on this item, Stanley Sims.
All right, Mr. Sims, information-only item, but the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Sims comes forward, there was a fantastic video that's on talgov.com. I'll resend it to you that features the people, the history of Jake Gaither, and, you know, we'd love to promote it more because it's really about the people, the history, and WCO T produced it, and I'll share it with you again and make sure we highlight that.
Can I say one more thing?
Of course. Come on up here. Please, well, we're audio taping, so.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all right.
I was gonna ask Irene Perry to come to the meeting tonight, but I'm gonna see if I can get her July 13. She is, if not the first woman of color to play golf in Tallahassee, she's one of the first. And Elthea Gibson would probably be the first if she actually played at Gaither, which there was a chance that she did. So that's another amazing thing about Jake Gaither.
Cool. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. Before I was at 1320, Jan, I was at 1010 Silver Ridge, which was about three miles from Jake Gaither Park. And I'm very proud of this moment. Commissioner Curtis Richardson, as I was sitting over there, I was thinking about Mr. Lawrence. I think it would be remiss if his name wasn't called in this moment. I was thinking about Coach Robert Mungin, because they not only played golf, Mayor, they advocated for golf in the black community. I remember being 10 and 12 years old when Miss Annie Mae Knight used to work the snipe shop that used to work behind the golf shop. See, this is my homegrown. And the reason why I'm excited about things like this here, Mr. Cook, because we're being proactive, Mayor, in saving black dying history. We're being proactive. This is smart. I commend you, Jan. I commend you for this work because this is a legacy that's being built. And it's just, this is good, and it would be remiss not to say Mr. Lawrence's name. Mr. Lawrence say, any smart man know how to play golf, and if you don't, you just trying to act like you're smart. I never learned how to play golf, bless his heart.
Uh-oh. We know what that means.
Yes. So I just wanted you to know that these little small incroyable places holds great value to us, and it means something to us. We may not never see Tiger Woods, but we know about Johnny. And there's so many icons, unknown icons, from the Black 100 Men Play Golf that grab those kids off of their playground adjacent to them and talk to them, Mayor. A village on a golf course. Again, Jan, thank you very much, you and your staff. Mr. Treon, Sheldon is not your child, he's mine. I will have him on my tax return. Do not put him on there. He loves my son, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge that. They took some of your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. We're gonna move on then to item number 13.02. Before we do so, can somebody in the back of the chambers, Robert, can you help me out getting a very nasty glare out of both of those windows for public comment? If we could just angle ever so slightly, that'd be great. Thank you. I don't know if y'all were getting the same glare I was getting off the car, so. Excellent. We're on item number 13.02. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up item from your discussion at your last meeting on May 18, and it seeks your approval of the proposed policy, which is attached to your agenda material, that will require agencies that provide human services to seek city funding through the CHSP or Community Human Services Partnership Program, or the Bridge Program that you created a couple of budget cycles ago, to create a path to CHP eligibility or viability. Under the proposed funding policy, requests for human services providers wouldn't be accepted outside of those processes. We want to provide a summary of what's attached, again, in your agenda material. Kimball Thomas is our Director of Housing and Community Resilience, and he'll walk us through the policy.
Dr. Thomas, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Go, respective appointed officials. As well stated, per your direction from the May 18 City Commission Budget Workshop, we brought forth a policy that we believe will maintain the existing integrity of our CHSP and our Bridge to CHP process. We seek your approval, and with that approval, all funding requests from human service providers will no longer be accepted outside of a formal CHSP and CHSP-to-Bridge process. We're here to answer any questions. You have additional historical information and the progress and the performance of both the CHSP and the Bridge to CHP process in your packets, and I'm here with the respective staff to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
Mayor, we have two individuals on this item. The first is Amber Tyne.
Ms. Tyne, how was the conference, first of all?
It was amazing. Thank you so much for speaking. You stole part of my thunder, but thank you for being there.
I did not mean to, but congratulations on the wonderful conference. Your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Amber Tyne, 2477 Tim Gamble Place, 32308. Amber Tyne and I represent United Partners for Human Services. We are a membership organization comprised of over 200 human service not-for-profits here in Tallahassee, and we have a longstanding partnership with both the City of Tallahassee and Leon County to maintain the integrity of not only CHSP, but to enhance the capacity of our agencies that we work with. I want to thank you, Mayor, for being there yesterday, for making remarks, and demonstrating your commitment and your support to the nonprofit sector. We do greatly appreciate that, as well as your colleagues. We greatly appreciate that. In our work, we've remained a strong advocate to support the integrity of the process, and we are in full support of item 13.02 and Policy 250, which would prevent any agency from going around the CHSP or Bridge process to seek funding. It may be a non-issue with the approval of that this evening, but in the event that this item does not pass, we are also going to be opposing the help request in the amount of 684,500. I know that it is not supported by staff in the budget item starting at 5:30, but to maintain consistency with our advocacy efforts, we are going to be opposing that tonight as well. We appreciate the partnership and happy to answer any questions, and staff has been amazing to work with, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment?
Mayor Rob Rinsey did register to speak, but he simply wanted to waive his time in support of the item and thank the commission for your action.
Wonderful. Let's open it up for discussion.
And Mr. Sims just waved his hand. I didn't have a speaker card, but.
I feel one out.
Sure, Mr. Sims, please join us. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm the Executive Director of Help. This is really kind of complex for me because I really am blessed by the services that United Services provide, but this is a unique situation. I believe that help proposal is unique because it's one like the wildlife St. Francis. It's a soul source. It's a proposal that addresses through pandemic times. We've never been through a pandemic before. It's a proposal that continues to do what we've already been doing, that's enabling small minority businesses like Tyrone, the shoe shine guy, like the car wash guy that's gonna come up here today. We don't have the right resources, but given the right resources, I've brought countless small businesses up here that have needed our assistance, and we've demonstrated it. I am 4,000% with United Partnership, with the integrity of a system. That's why we are qualified to go through the CHSP process, but chose not to do that because we wanted to go through the blueprint process, and we thought it would be robbery to go through both processes. So, does the CHSP have a category that helps small business and nonprofits? No. So it's really in the category of St. Francis. And what's so hardening and disappointing, each time this proposal has gone up, it is lost against cats and dogs. Each time, cats and dogs. Our businesses are failing. There's articles in the paper that says that even though we will see great gains from Amazon, there will be some negative impact, and those negative impacts first implements in brown businesses.
You're right.
And I'm asking, I'm asking that this commission be proactive to have an agency on the ground to help our small businesses in a unique fashion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion. 13.02.
Move acceptance.
Okay, it's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing any further comment? All right, all those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. 13.03, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. This item recommends some amendments to our lobbyist registration ordinance. As you know, in February of 2011, the commission adopted an ordinance to enact requirements for paid lobbyists to register with the city treasurer clerk. In the intervening years, the 11 years it's been in place, over that time, we've identified certain aspects that can be amended to streamline the process and align us better with other peer governments across the state. And so what you have in this agenda item are a number of individual recommendations, all of which obviously are recommended, but they're listed one by one so that you can see each of the items. Quite a bit of material, but individually, I think they're each fairly straightforward. And so the recommendation is that you approve each of these as identified, and the item says 1A, 2A, 3A, 4, et cetera. And so they're before you for consideration, and I can answer any questions you have as you move forward, and if you need me to introduce the individual items with more detail, I can do that.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation, option number one. Mayor.
Okay. Staff recommendation for option number one, which I would, that includes option 1A, 2A, 3A, 4, and 5A?
Yes.
Okay. The motion on table, is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion, second, discussion. I tell you what, I'm going to weigh in, and then, just real quick, I'll support the motion on the table. However, I think what would make this a complete package is to keep the lobbying registration fee. I don't have a problem with, I mean, it's not a source of revenue, I get it, but I think we're making the statement. And I do think that if you are a paid lobbyist, then you should have to financially register per client, just like you do right now before the City of Tallahassee. What is it, $25 a client?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I would even be interested in seeing that increase, but at least some type of payment to formally represent before the City of Tallahassee. I mean, it's not a deal breaker for me, however, I'd love to throw that out for discussion as well. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no opinion either way on the fee, whatever is easiest at the Treasurer Clerk's office. I just, my question was going to be for the Treasurer Clerk. Have you discussed your recommendations with the Ethics Officer or Ethics Board members?
In particular, the first couple of items dealing with the fee and the quarterly compensation report, we had identified those a few months ago when you were taking up the Ethics Board's recommendations, and when we brought those to their attention, they did not have significant concern with either of those. Their thought was that they were administrative in nature and not the substance of someone registering to lobby, and so that that information is known for the public. They did it that initially did not want to eliminate the quarterly compensation report because they felt that it would capture contingent fee information, but with the action that you previously have taken to eliminate contingency fees, that concern went away, and we had that discussion with the Ethics Board. The other items, I haven't gone through individually, but they are aware that they're on the agenda, and a couple of them, for instance, one will require us to comply with a state law change that goes into effect, so that wouldn't be of significance to them. So I'm not aware of any opposition from the Ethics Officer or that board.
Okay. And just a question on the fees. Is that an online portal payment, or is that coming to the office and ready to check?
At this time, it's not an online portal payment. Part of that process was looking at all of these processes. We knew that we had some items to bring to you, so we wanted to know exactly what our structure was before we put something in place to do that. So if the fee goes away, obviously, that's not significant. If it remains, then we'll follow up with the best process for collecting that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, you and I have had extensive conversations about this, and remind me regarding the fee, what is it that the county is doing, and what is it that the state is doing?
Yes, ma'am. And on the fee, the county's fee is also 25, as ours is. I'm not certain what the state's is. It may continue to be 25. Matt Lutz's, I was checking with Matt, he had looked at that at one time, but I'm not sure what that current number is. Our thought there was, in looking across the state, we found that in Broward and Dade Counties, they charge a significant sum for registration, several hundred dollars. Otherwise, across the state, about 14 of our peer jurisdictions, cities and counties of significant size, over half either don't have a program or don't charge a fee, and of those who do, that fee's anywhere between $10 and $50. But the county is 25, just to your specific question.
Okay. And when we had this discussion before, I had some concerns about being consistent between the city and the county.
Yes, ma'am.
But I also had some concerns about $25 is a small amount of money to pay as a fee for a paid lobbyist, and so it looks like it costs more to collect it than what you could do with it.
Yes, ma'am. And that was part of our thought in the recommendation was that, our effort was to make sure that people register. We thought that might streamline the process a little bit, but you're absolutely correct that if you have a fee, $25 certainly is not covering the cost on a routine basis.
It's not cost $25, like the $25 fee.
And administer the remainder of the quarterly compensation reports and that sort of thing that we're trying to eliminate as well, do have some administrative component to it. But no, there's not a significant cost for.
If a person, if a person's making $15 an hour, and they're collecting fees, and you've got somebody that's got to do something with it, it could begin to add up. I just mentioned that because those were some of the issues that you and I discussed. In fact, I was in favor of it being greater than 25.
Right.
But if we're not going to be greater than 25, then I'm just, I don't see why we would bother trying to collect it. I wanted something huge.
Porter.
We need money.
Commissioner Porter, and then the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, a clarifying question. With the motion on the floor, does that include the recommended action for 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A, 5A, 6?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I agree with the comments. I'm open-minded about the fee and whether that's something we want to table now and revisit, whether it's increasing it or getting rid of it altogether. I'm open-minded about that. But I, other than that, I think that, I'm glad that we're reviewing this. It sounds like it's going to streamline the process. I think it's important that we make this as easy as possible for people to register, so I'm glad to see these changes. Thank you.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And what I would like to do is offer an amendment. Seems like there is an appetite for keeping the fee and raising it. I wouldn't have any objection to that.
Okay.
I agree, too. If someone's, you know, a paid lobbyist, then $25, either we get rid of the fee or keep it. What I'd like to amend the policy to do is state that we will remove that recommendation from the motion, and we make a separate motion to have that brought back for further discussion.
Okay. Why don't we just withdraw the original motion?
Okay.
That you made. And so, in the second, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Commissioner Williams Cox, are you comfortable withdrawing it?
I am.
And then Mayor Pro Tem, you're recognized for a new motion.
I would move then that we accept all of the recommendations from staff with the exception of the required fee.
The recommended action would be for option 2A, 3A, 4, and 5A?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, in the body of the agenda item, it listed those five specifically, but as you go through the entire agenda item, there are items 6 through 12, so I would ask that the motion be sure to clarify that each of those pieces is included. For instance, the item comporting with state law is in that, I believe it's item 7. So, so it's for all staff recommendations except for the fee, is my understanding.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cook, I'm going strictly, and I'm coming to the attorney in a second, I'm going strictly off the agenda item which says recommended action, approve the following options, and what is listed is 1A, 2A, 3A, 4, and 5A. So the recommended options actually are?
As you described.
1A, 2A, 3A, 4, 5A.
Yeah. And then.
I see the discrepancy. Okay. There is a discrepancy here. Hold on.
So the recommended items in the summary at the top are longer than the one in the body? Yes, sir.
So the recommended action at the top, if you look, colleagues, list out 1A, 2A, 3A, 4, 5A, 6, 7, 8, 8, 9, 10, 8, 11, and 12, whereas the recommended action in the body, approve the following options, includes 1A, 2A, 3A, 4, and 5A. Are we clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we've all been briefed?
Yes.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to comment just briefly on the item. Although we have worked to some extent with the Clerk's Office, regarding the specific language, we would like to work further to make sure they're legally defensible. In general, the objectives are fine, but I just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to work with that language a bit to make sure we have the most legally defensible language we can bring.
And we completely agree with that, Mayor. We obviously, as to introduce an item, we always need the attorney's assistance to prepare that language properly.
Excellent. Okay. Any question? Good motion that I look forward to supporting. Any other comment on the motion on the table? Are we clear on the motion on the table?
Yes, and I continue to second it.
All right. So the motion's been properly made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
Okay. In regards to the fee, I know we say we want to talk about, but I think that we're going to need to make a decision at some point, because I know that the Clerk's Office needs to move on this, and they'd like to move, you know, with it all together, is what I would like to do. I would like to see this fee be more than $25.
Okay.
I would agree.
Is there a dollar amount that you have in mind?
I'd like to add a zero at the end.
What you say?
Mr. Mayor.
So, okay, let's have a conversation. I got Commissioner Porter, and I'm coming to the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's appropriate, I would make a motion to have Mr. Cook bring back an item, perhaps with a review of other cities and some options for us to consider.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the table for an agenda item to come back specifically regarding lobbyist registration fees with a, and we will, I'm looking at my colleagues, anyone have a problem with including as one of the options Commissioner Williams Cox's $250 fee per, I mean, for, you know, part of the conversation discussion? Okay.
I have a, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. I'm going to come to Commissioner Matlow, and then back to you, Commissioner Williams Cox. Did I skip you?
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll support the motion since it's coming back, but I do think when we analyze it, the goal here is to make sure the public has the information of who is lobbying. You know, collecting $1,000 annually isn't of great importance one way or the other to me, but I don't want to get into a situation where people are using a fee as an excuse not to register, because what we want people to know, if you're doing any type of paid lobbying, you're getting paid 50 bucks to come lobby the commission, we want to know and have you sign up and register.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Williams Cox, I'm sorry.
I wanted to go back to Mr. Cook because I thought that you've already done some review of what other cities and other places are doing. Am I mistaken in that?
You are not mistaken. That is correct, and I believe we, I can have Mr. Lutz come and give you a little bit more of that information. I will also add that one thing that we could get clarification from the attorney, having asked her this question in advance, we could, I believe, have our ordinance structured such that the fee is set by a resolution of the commission, which would allow us to go ahead and specify now that the fee would be set by resolution, and so that we could remain at $25 until such time as we had a follow-up if we need to bring an agenda item back. But if it's your will to hear some of that specific information, I can bring Mr. Lutz forward.
Mr. Will of the body.
Bring Mr. Lutz forward. He's ready.
Mr. Lutz, thank you for joining us.
We saw your eagerness to come up here.
Nearly 17 years, I've only been called forward two or three times, so I think I'm doing pretty good. We did survey a number of jurisdictions. I think it was 29 in total. It was the 15 most populous cities and the 10 most populous counties. There were some nuances to that with Jacksonville and Duval being, you know, so we added a few since we were in the data set, but Leon County was not. We added them. Since Gainesville was in the data, or Latua was in the data set, we went ahead and brought in Gainesville as well. What we saw was, generally speaking, the largest fees were in the area of Miami, Dade, and Broward Counties. Some of the fees in that area were significant. If you kind of remove them from the picture and you look at the rest of Florida, then the landscape changes. Out of the remaining jurisdictions, 10 of those charged no fee, only four did, and Leon County being one of those four. Of those four charging a fee, the highest fee was $50. The smallest fee was 10.
Questions from Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this, some of these are questions, if you have answers, and some of this is general thoughts. I mean, I think it's important for us to think about, and maybe you can weigh in on, you know, what the purpose is of the fee in the first place, if it is to cover the administrative costs of lobbyist registration, if it is a revenue source to perhaps, you know, supplement education about lobbying, or, you know, increase transparency. You know, I guess I'm curious what the use is in these different offices or jurisdictions, how they justify the cost of the fee.
In our review of the other jurisdictions, we didn't specifically look for any, you know, stated purpose for the fees, or where they deposited the funds to, or if there was a specific purpose. So I would have to go back and reread the ordinances and the procedures from those different jurisdictions. But my recollection is, I don't recall seeing anything specifically, so my guess is, like we do, they're simply deposited in the general revenue.
Okay. Thank you. And my final comment, I would like some more time to think about this, and so I still support, you know, having this discussion. I think that I agree with Commissioner Matlow's comments, that, and I think we all agree, that I don't want there to be more barriers to people to register because of the importance of the transparency. And so that, to me, is important utmost, and even raising it to $250, it's not going to be a significant source of revenue for the city, though it would be more. So I'm happy to, but I'm willing, I would like to continue this conversation, but I'm not comfortable making a decision tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Motion on tables, to bring an item back.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, during your conversation, I had a speaker brought forward. Do you want to take that, or have we missed that opportunity to ignore the citizen?
No, there's, it's unusual, there's a motion on the table, but we have the time to do so, so let's go ahead and hear from them.
Priscilla Hawkins.
Ms. Hawkins, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Priscilla Hawkins, Spottin Willow Lane. And may I apologize for the lateness? But my concern is, you guys know I came back to my city, and I have some concerns about my city. What I, this lobbyist ordinance, along with a number of other people, I'm sure, I have, and it's not a long memory, I have a short memory, that Tallahassee recently had a problem regarding ethics and lobbyists. And the streamlining of this program, you know, I'm not familiar with everything, Mr. Cook, so, you know, at some point, I'll, I'd like to see that, and so I'll go online, and hopefully it's there for me. But what I see for Tallahassee is to make it so that we don't have the same kinds of problems that we had previously, and so tightening rather than, and I guess the word streamlined for me, you know, as in make it smoother, make it easier, I don't have a problem with making it smoother, but I have a problem with making it too easy in terms of just making sure that we handle the ethics concerns that will come out of this. And of course, I have to, again, Mr. Cook, look at all of the information as to what 1, 2, 3, through 5 all mean. But Tallahassee has had some problems, and I don't want us to have another problem coming out of something like this. And maybe my concerns are not warranted, but I at least wanted to state them at this point, so that if anybody has a concern like I have a concern, then our commissioners will at least now be thinking, is there going to be a problem down the line with this? And if so, how do we keep it from happening? So that's all I wanted to mention on this, and I appreciate the time.
Great. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Hold on. Hold on. Just a second. The motion on the table is to bring an agenda item back for further consideration. Mr. Cook.
I apologize for jumping in there, Mayor. I simply was going to let Ms. Hawkins know that I'll be glad to meet with her. This item does have to come back, even the portion that had already been approved will come back for introduction of ordinance, so you will have further opportunity to see the information, just making myself available.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Excellent. Okay. Any other comment on the item before we vote? Motion on the table is made, bring the item back. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 13.04. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.04 is the reimbursement of the attorney's fees for Commissioner Jeremy Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and since this is reimbursement for successfully defending against an ethics complaint, I'll recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. All right. Madam Attorney, floor is yours.
Thank you. An ethics complaint was filed against Commissioner Jeremy Matlow on December 14, 2021, by Carlos A. Ray, who received anonymous emails and filed a complaint in his capacity as Chair of the City of Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board. of the City of Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board. The complaint was dismissed by the City of Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board's order on April 19, 2022. Commissioner Matlow prevailed in every aspect of the complaint that was brought against him. Commissioner Matlow selected Ron Meyer of the law firm of Meyer, Bloom, and Powell to represent him. During the penancy of this complaint, Commissioner Matlow paid attorney Ron Meyer and his firm a total of $3,000 for attorney's fees. Application was made on April 9, 2022 by Commissioner Matlow pursuant to City Commission Policy 103. This policy provides for reimbursement for the reasonable attorney's fees and costs when an official prevails in their ethics complaint. Commissioner Matlow is entitled to reimbursement of the reasonable attorney's fees and costs because he was successfully defended and prevailed against the ethics complaint. These charges arose out of and in connection with his employment with the city while acting in his official capacity as City Commissioner. Reimbursement entitlement is pursuant to City Commission Policy 103 and common law in Florida. Recommended action is option 1, authorize the city to reimburse Commissioner Matlow the sum of $3,000 from the Risk Management Claims Fund, 740-120601-540070.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any further comment on the side?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move the attorney's recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 4-0 with Commissioner Matlow having recused himself on the item. Do we have any other business to come before the City Commission this afternoon?
No, sir.
Okay, we are on un-agenda business speakers. Do we have any un-agenda business speakers, Mr. Cook?
We do not.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on an un-agenda item? Now is the opportunity, you can fill your card up after, after you speak. Okay. Moving on, let's go ahead and move on to City Commission information and sharing of ideas. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item, I have had conversations with the attorney and city manager about a consideration of an EV ordinance by the city similar to what the county recently passed, but what I would ask, rather than information be brought back for an ordinance at this point, that information be brought back, and we be given a report on EV readiness and what we're doing, and information on the county's ordinance. For those who don't know, that is the infrastructure to support electronic vehicles throughout the community, and that is in keeping with our clean energy policy, I think it would be, Mr. Mayor. And so just want to educate us on what's happening out here, what we're already doing as a city, what the county has done, and maybe other municipalities and counties, and determine the direction that we would like to go as a city.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Mayor Pro Tem?
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great to be out in the community, your recommendation, Commissioner Williams Cox, to have the meeting here. I just wanted to also just express, I think the chief made some great comments earlier to everybody, employees of the City of Tallahassee, everyone at Tallahassee Police Department, and across our community, that are just hurting right now because of the news that was found out this morning. We're here with you, we completely support you as a city commission, and stand ready to help get through this however we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams Cox?
I want to join in as well, was able to be at the press conference this morning. Very somber time in our community, it reminds us of the fact that we are mere mortals, doing the very best job that we can, and I think that it also causes us to challenge ourselves to remember that. Public service is a choice. Everyone does not do public service, but for those of us who do public service, it's that great sacrifice, and sometimes we lose some. And some of the conversations or rhetoric that we toss back and forth, sometimes we don't get a chance to fix it before that happens. So let's just be kind to one another, let's take care of one another. The City of Tallahassee has suffered some losses recently, we've lost Delmas, and now we've lost this officer, and I just don't want us to forget that we are a family. We may not always agree, but we are a family, and let's remember that, and let's look out for one another, let's take care of one another, and welcome to the South Side. Thank you for coming out, it was recommended at our last meeting that we come here, come to the community to talk about the budget, so I'm glad to see that you joined us, hope you stick around for the budget, and we're just glad to be here. And lastly, let me just share a story, well, actually, it's a true story. On Saturday, I had, and I've said this to several folks, I had an opportunity to speak to a group of Girl Scouts, and I went around the room and asked them what they want to be, some wanted to be a tennis player, some wanted to be a photographer, artist, lawyer, psychologist, some didn't know. But the littlest one in the room, second grader, with their biggest, prettiest eyes you've ever seen, said, "I want to be a police officer." I had not heard a child say that in a very long time, and so I'm encouraging us to, let's talk to our children, let's hug them a little tighter, and let's embrace what it is that they want to be, let's model what they want to be, that we want them to be, let's be an example for them. And so somewhere along the line, she had a positive reaction with the police, and now she wants to be one, and we're going to make sure she has every opportunity to be exposed so that she can have that opportunity to be a police officer. And Jan, thank you for what you're doing over at the golf course. I know there's a counterpart at the tennis course, because we need to find them, because the little girl said she wanted to play tennis, and so we got to make sure we find her, somebody who can help her get a racket and get busy. So thank you all so much for all that you do, to the staff and my colleagues, thank you for allowing me to be who I am, and loving me and embracing me anyway. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly agree with what's been said, and express my deepest condolences, and I'm truly grateful for the people who do put their lives on the line for us, and any way we can be of support, I know that you will let us know. And I hate to, you know, on this note, I mean, I do have some questions for our city manager and some concerns frankly, and I hate to do it in this moment, after such a tender sharing of ideas, but I do feel it's important. Mr. City Manager, could you give me some context, this was before I arrived on the commission, about the Office of Strategic Innovation and what department oversees our lobbying contracts, where did it used to be, and why did we change it?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Manager.
So this is the Department of Strategic Innovation, they're responsible for a variety of activities, including lobbying, development of the strategic plan, as well as agenda preparation and policymaking. In particular, related to lobbying, that function used to be in the mayor's office when Mayor Daley was elected, it was important for him to change that function, and he shifted it back to the city manager's purview.
Okay, thank you. And I thought that was the case, I just wanted that clarification. You know, frankly, I read in the news today and was shocked and concerned, Mr. Manager, that you have hired the mayor's chief of staff as the Director of Strategic Innovation. Instilled in our charter is the belief that politics should be removed and should not interfere with the hiring and firing of employees. I respect that in my comments, and I respect that full stop. That being said, that does not keep me from weighing in and having an opinion and input on hiring decisions. The Director of Strategic Innovation is responsible for executing the city's strategic plan, it's a mission, critical position. To hire someone who has no formal experience, no formal training, no formal qualifications, except for four years as an aide to the mayor in this position, is frankly extraordinary. This reeks of cronyism, I think it's a slap in the face to employees of the city who have worked for decades to achieve the kind of raise and promotion we're talking about here. I had the privilege of studying under some incredible professionals at the Ask You School at FSU. Let me tell you, this is not normal, this is not a best practice, this is not providing exceptional citizen service, this is not honoring the public's trust through ethical behavior. People talk, and I hear from staff, I hear that they are demoralized, I hear that they feel overlooked, and they feel disrespected, I think you know this is wrong, and I just had to let the record show that the people of Tallahassee and employees who work here deserve better from their leadership. Thank you.
You still have the floor, Commissioner Porter?
That's all for me, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
I would love to respond, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, please.
And certainly, I want to respect the meeting here itself, but Commissioner Porter, I beg to differ in almost every point that you make. The process is that we advertise for jobs, we seek the very best candidates, we interview for those jobs, in this case, it was an interview panel of executive managers, assistant city managers, deputy city manager, and Mr. Whitley was by far the best candidate.
Doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Whitley was by far the best candidate. Mr. Whitley does have a PhD, has outstanding educational credentials, and he's going to add extremely good value to our organization. He has direct experience working on the strategic plan that was adopted by this commission now two and a half years ago or thereabouts, we're making good progress on that, and so I'm very confident in the hire. It is not a political hire, Dr. Whitley is not a political person, he's not a politician. He did work as the mayor's chief of staff, we all understand that, which gave him great experience in our organization, as well as with strategic planning and lobbying and policymaking. And so I'm very confident he will do a good job, he follows in the footsteps of the original director of the department, Christian Doolin, who did an outstanding job, he will work hand in glove with Mr. Doolin, they have a very, very capable team, and so I am confident in the hire, I'm confident in the process, I'm confident that we got a good list of candidates, but Dr. Whitley was far and above the best candidate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the charter is very clear on the non-interference on the hiring and firing. I am going to suggest at this point, if any other commissioner has any other comments, that you go directly to the city manager, ask all the questions that you want, be briefed on it, but we are not going to have a public conversation on any employee status at the City of Tallahassee. I am very pleased, and was sad to see Dr. Whitley leave my office. With that on my time, let me introduce Courtney Thomas, who is now the chief of staff to the mayor, who I have full faith and confidence in. And I'm looking forward to continue working with her. And Dr. Thomas, I wish you well. Moving forward in your role. Summarize this meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tem?
The one thing I didn't want us to forget in this conversation about the recent tragedy with the police officer, is the family that was impacted by this. We're talking about a mother and her two children. I can't imagine what that must be like for them and for their families, so let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers as well, because they have got to be traumatized. It was a blessing that they all survived, but I can't imagine the trauma that they must be experiencing as a family, so let's not forget about them as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I want to weigh in as well. I'm sorry on your time, I know it's on your time.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Williams Cox?
I just want to take credit for Courtney Thomas, our charter in Sunny School. I'm very proud of her.
I could be construed politically.
Well, I'm just, it's a fact. I'm very proud of her doing what she's doing, and even since I've been here, I've seen tremendous growth, and I'm looking forward to working with her and working with her leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner Porter, I appreciate your comments. I've long expressed my not only distrust but dissatisfaction in the city manager and cities, the hiring, firing process was one thing I cited specifically in my review of city manager re-schooled in 2019, and there is a problem, there is a problem in the way things operate in the city, the way people get employed, the way people get moved up, the way reorganizations happen and large raises get handed out, these aren't normal things in normal governments, where people continue to have to come out and say, you know, why are we giving out hundreds and hundreds of thousands of raises when there's a budget deficit? That's abnormal, and it really, it just reflects on the city manager and the type of government that we're operating here. I'm not under any disillusion that we're going to resolve that issue and create a better city here today or tonight, but one way or the other, the city's going to change, and we can do better, and I think in the future, we will do better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, let's be very careful having a public conversation due to the non-interference clause of the city charter on hiring and firing. I am encouraging all of my colleagues to please schedule time with the city manager or any appointed official if you have concerns about how they hire and fire. Let us be very careful about discriminating in an open process anyone who might want to apply for a job and go through that process. I will finish up this meeting on my time now with three points. First of all, I want to congratulate our incredible team, starting with the city manager all the way down with the reopening of Benton Road. It has been a long haul for over a year, that is a major corridor in our community. The team did a phenomenal job, I think that it will definitely add to the quality of life in our transportation corridors. I'm sorry, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for covering the press conference today, I was at the police station dealing with this morning's events, but I heard it was wonderful, and certainly do appreciate every, all city staff for the amazing job that we did. Number two, if we could, I would also like to take a moment of silence, we lost Commissioner Jimbo Jackson last week as well. Jimbo was a great county commissioner, he was an incredible principal, he was our friend, and he will be dearly missed. So if you will join me for a second for a moment of silence for Commissioner Jimbo. Thank you. Finally, on a personal note, Commissioner Richardson, you lost your brother recently as well, and I know that you have family obligations that need to take you out of town as soon as this evening, and I want you to know that on a personal note, we love you, we support you, and we will be thinking about your family as well during this time of need, and we are very sorry to hear about you. So folks, we're going to stand in recess, we will come back, well, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and we will be back at 6 o'clock for the budget workshop for the City of Tallahassee.